Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular council meeting on January 2nd, 2024. The mayor is attending remotely, but he feels it's appropriate to have the meeting chaired by somebody in person. That person is me, I'm Paul Mayo, council president. I'd like to inform everybody that I will be voting on agenda items. We'll start the meeting out. We're first going to do a public hearing. And to explain the reason for the public hearing, Jared will inform us.
Thank you very much. So this public hearing is in regards to ordinance number 1423, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Building Code. This is the first reading, of course, with the public hearing. This ordinance is amending Chapter 14 to add language into the code that would essentially allow us to manage and upkeep with the maintenance of homes. So right now, under the current Building Code standards that we've adopted through the state of Wisconsin, we can govern and, I guess, control would be a good word, the construction of buildings. After that permit is issued and after the occupancy is given, we do not have any control if there are broken windows. Water heater is broken and a landlord doesn't want to fix it. Things like that that may make a home, quote unquote, "unlivable." You know, depending on your standards, I'm sure you can make anything livable. But the appropriate living conditions are kind of outlined in this code to allow for somebody to properly live in a house. So I guess, to put it shortly, this ordinance is just adding language that would allow us to enforce if there's a home in disrepair, we can enforce or work on fixing it with those property owners per our code if it's adopted.
Thank you, Jared.
Yeah.
So at this time, I would be looking for testimony in favor of the subject. If you have any testimony in favor of the subject, step to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Okay, hearing none, I'd be looking for testimony in opposition to the subject. Hearing none, I'll declare this public hearing closed at 6:03 PM. Now we'll jump right into the council meeting, and we'll start it out with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barb, would you read the opening, open meeting statement, please?
Sure. This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you, Barb. Would you take your role?
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Scott Porczatski?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Corey Nagel?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Nine eyes, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Barb. Would you start, Barb, with the introduction to city staff?
Sure. Barb Noack, City Clerk.
Aaron Johnson, City Administrator.
Matt Clatt, Airport Manager.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Jared Kivala, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Reif, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Brian Hozell, Chief of Police.
We have Josh Warner, I believe, in the control room. Okay, next is the approval of the consent agenda. This is a vote to approve a bunch of things all at once. If anybody has any item in the consent agenda that they would like removed and moved to a regular agenda, now is the time to make that request. If not, I would be looking for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second then.
Moved by Martin, second by Dijkstra, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, no. Motion carries. Next is approval of the regular agenda. I don't think we have anything additional, Barb, right?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Olson, second by Peterson, to approve tonight's regular agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, no. Motion carries. Next is non-agenda items, specifically announcements and correspondence. First up, we have two recognitions of service to the city. First is for Police Chief Brian Hozell, who's been with the city for 30 straight years. We have recognition certificates here, but the mayor needs to sign them, but so you're not going to get them tonight. But just recognizes Brian as serving the city and the police department for 30 straight years. Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation of certificate of appreciation to Sam Zebel for five years' service at the city. Is Sam here tonight? He worship you? Justin, okay. Okay, same thing with the certificate. Mayor needs to sign it, so we'll just keep it right here for now. Okay, thanks. Next up is public input. If anybody has any public input, council, staff, or anybody in the audience has any public input, please, for non-agenda items, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Item one is shared ride taxi contract between the City of Wapaka and Brown Cab Service Incorporated. And Stephanie is going to handle this.
Thank you. My report starts on page 30 in the council packet. And as I kind of started with this at the last council meeting, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation requires that the city bid our service at least every five years. An RFP was distributed in September with a proposal due date of October 16th, and the city received two proposals, one from our current service provider, Brown Cab Service, and the second from LIR Transportation, or also known as Fox Valley Cab. Both proposals have been uploaded to the city council folder where this meeting agenda is also found. So if you'd like to take a look at that, you're welcome to. The RFP outlined an initial two-year contract with three one-year renewals. The evaluation committee met and shared input and scored both proposals individually on October 17th of last year. The proposals were scored based on wing scoring with a maximum of 100 points, as listed in the packet. Based on the scoring requirements for the RFP, Brown Cab received the highest score and is therefore being recommended by the, to the common council for approval. Below is a breakdown of the final scoring, as well as the price component evaluations. And as you can see, Brown Cab Service did score 89.75 points, and LIR Transportation scored 37.62 points. Following that is the contract service provider rates, so you can take a look at that. There was a pretty significant difference in the pricing for the proposals. With the proposed shared ride taxi contract, the prices will increase from $36.36 currently to $39.96, or about 10% increase. This added expense will be offset by the proposed rider fare and agency increases and projected increases in the 5311 funds, which are also tied to a percentage of overall costs. The public hearing is scheduled for January 16th, and will be addressing the rider fare increases that are set to go into effect as of February 1st in 2024. And it is being recommended that we approve the 2024-2025 shared ride taxi service contract with Brown Cab Inc.
Thanks, Stephanie. Any questions for Stephanie? Okay, I'd be looking for a motion in a second to approve the contract between the City of Wapaka and Brown Cab Service Incorporated, if that's what you wish to do.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Martin, second by Velicker, to approve the contract between the City of Wapaka and Brown Cab Service Incorporated. Any further discussion? Barb, you take the role call, please.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item number two is vehicle lease agreement for 2024 between the City of Wapaka and Brown Cab Service Incorporated. And Stephanie, this is you, too.
Thank you. This starts on page 42 in the packet. And this kind of goes along with what we just talked about with the contract. The City of Wapaka and Brown Cab Service have a lease agreement that will need to be renewed as part of this contract. The lease agreement includes the use of city-owned vehicles for their business operations. The lease agreement has been utilized for the past several years, and with the extended offer to continue our partnership with Brown Cab Service, we will need to include the lease agreement as part of this contract. So the recommendation is to approve this lease agreement with Brown Cab.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions? Henry?
I'm sorry, are you ready for a motion?
Sure.
Did I jump the gun? I'll make a motion to enter into the lease with Brown Cab for, what was it, eight city-owned vehicles? Seven, as noted?
Seven.
Seven, thank you.
Anybody like to second that?
I'll second.
Moved by Velicker, second by Peterson, that council approve a vehicle lease agreement for 2024 between the City of Wapaka and Brown Cab Service Incorporated. Any further discussion? Barb, take a little call vote, please.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Move on to new business. First item under new business is Resolution Number 1554-2023, a resolution updating special charge for garbage and recycling for calendar year 2024. Justin?
Yes. This resolution is shown on page 45 of the packet, so this occurs every year. So going back to our initial starting of the garbage program, we have a five-year agreement with GFL. Each year, the cost of that service has fixed increases of 3%. Within the ordinance that we adopted and said at that time, we would notify the public of the special charge each and every year, including the increases, which is, this is what it's showing. If we do not do this, then we, I wouldn't say fall, but we stick with our current rates from 2023. So with that, what's shown on here is the charges. So it is for 2024, $14.80 for garbage and recycling services. If you'd like an additional garbage tote, it's an extra $10.45. If you'd like an additional recycling tote, it's $4.35. That's all a monthly charge, which is placed on your sewer and water bill. There is a surcharge for diesel fuel. If it goes above $4 per gallon, increases a percent for every quarter in rise. That's nothing new, that has been on the agreement since the beginning. So with that, looking for approval of this and adopting this charge, what people will see on their January bill, which is pretty much distributed in early February.
Thanks, Justin. Any questions for Justin? Okay, I'd be looking for a motion in a second to approve Resolution Number 1554-2023.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Olson, second by Martin. The council approves of Resolution Number 1554, a resolution updating special charge for garbage and recycling for the calendar year of 2024. Any further discussion? Barb, you take a roll call vote.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item number two is Wisconsin Public Service easement at Mount Tom. Justin?
Yep.
You're up again.
Thank you. So this memo starts on 46, and supporting documents behind it. This is another easement from Wisconsin Public Service. This should have came along with the lift station easement at Brainerd's. It's the same project where WPS is undertaking a large overhead-to-underground project on the west end of the city. This one, again, is pretty critical to their improvements. This would not cost the city any money at all, but they would have the right to maintain their infrastructure, their facilities in this area. There are some smaller trees that will be removed along the south side of the fence line. Those were marked. They're very minor trees. The rest of it will be bored, and which means it will be directionally bored horizontally underground, so most of the trees will be spared. Like the other easement agreements, this one is temporary, which means like they will do the work, and then once it is finalized, they will, or once the work is final, they will finalize the exhibit and then record it at the county. So with, just like the other easements, the, there is a benefit to the city as having an improved service, especially to our water tower and our booster pump station there, which is vital to our water utility. So overall, there is a benefit to the city, and I'm seeking approval from council.
Any questions for Justin? Okay.
Move to approve?
Okay, moved by Martin, second by Hagan, to approve of an easement at Mount Tom with Wisconsin Public Service. Any further discussion? Barb, please take a roll call vote.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item three is the city-managed deer harvest. And Aaron's going to guide us through this.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. So on page 51, city council members, you'll see a memo. This memo looks very, very similar to the last several four years, at least. But I'll just summarize, for the past six years, the City of Wapaka has supported this managed deer harvest to reduce the deer populations within the city limits, largely to reduce the amount of vehicle accidents involving deer, as well as some plant damage and such. This has been managed by Roger Hanson each of those years in coordination with the Wisconsin DNR and Jake Fries. You'll see here in the summary some of the bullet points and the details of the hunt, hunt time period, January 9th through March 31st. The hunt will occur on large tracts of public and private land, city airport, recycling center, cemetery, well, Wapaka County, or Wapaka Country Club, just to name a few. Hunters can sign up on the city website, which they have done in the past, each of those past years. And then priority will be given to landowners and local residents. Hunters must have a valid bow license, and just want to reiterate, I know the city council knows this, but for those who are watching who may not be familiar, this is not a gun hunt, it is a bow hunt, and it is only antlerless deer, so it is not a trophy hunt. So that is what that bullet point talks about. Hunters are issued a tag and must purchase the $10 bow discharge permit, which is required in the city. Those permits are good for two years. 20 tags will be initially acquired from the Wisconsin DNR, and more tags may be given from Jake Fries, the DNR rep to Roger, who can distribute them if needed at that time. We haven't, I don't, I don't think we've gone above 20 in the past. I believe there were 14 harvested last year, and checking with Roger today. We've gotten close to 20, though, in previous years. Mr. Hanson will communicate with each hunter to explain all the rules, make sure that they're comfortable with it. The cost to process any deer will be at the hunter's expense. If the hunter does not want the deer, Roger will process and donate it to a local food pantry here in Wapaka. And then background checks will be done on all hunters, and then there's an agreement that's attached to this memo that will be signed by the hunters and will be administered by Mr. Hanson. So really, we're recommending that the city council consider approving the managed deer harvest for 2024.
Thanks, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Okay, I'd be looking for a motion in a second to approve, if that's what you want to do.
Move to approve the harvest coming year? Second.
Moved by Peterson, second by Nagel, that city approve of the city-managed deer harvest for the remainder, or for the first several months of 2024. Any further discussion? Barb, please take a roll call vote.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item number four is amendments to the City of Wapaka inclement weather policy. And Aaron, it's you again.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul. City council members, this is, this starts on page 54 of your packets. There's a memo put together. The City of Wapaka inclement weather policy is a policy that's in the City of Wapaka employee handbook. When our personnel committee got together in July of this past year for the first time, we did a little strategic planning exercise. We picked some bigger topics to tackle and maybe some lower-hanging fruit topics to prioritize. And this was one that the group thought there was maybe some inconsistency on and would like to take a look at and review and potentially amend. So that's what we did. The Personnel Committee reviewed it at our last meeting in December, and it is coming forward with the changes that are attached as recommended for approval through city council. Just to summarize some of those changes, or what the things we were looking to accomplish with the amendments, looking to just standardize the process a little bit in reviewing and the decision-making in regards to closing or delaying the openings of our public building. So really, city hall, library, rec center primarily during inclement weather events. Looking to create uniformity when possible. So how does that differ from maybe what we have been doing? There hasn't been kind of a centralized communication point. I know that the library director and the Parks and Rec Director have typically, well, they've done a good job communicating with each other and making calls based on the needs of their staffing and what the situations are for those departments. Sometimes what that results in is one being open, one not being open, or some being closed, city hall being open, and maybe just some general confusion. This policy would make it so the determination would be the city administrator position. The city administrator position would consult with the department heads and consult with the mayor before making that call. But then, if there is confusion on the public's part, at least there's an understanding of why decisions were made. Doesn't mean we can make it uniform across the board every time, because the reality is, is that we may have an employee at the rec center, and we may only need one person to open the facility in limited capacity, and that person might live across the street. Whereas we might need four to open in any capacity in the library, and those people may not live across the street. So we'll try to remain flexible. We're going to keep, obviously, employee safety as a priority, but also just trying to create some of these systems when making the call. We also wanted to just clarify how the employees' work hours and paid time off should be administered. As city council knows, we adopted a flexible work policy several months ago. That flexible work policy may come into play, or it may not, for some positions in these types of situations. But we, when it makes sense to have that take precedence, we would, we are saying that that would happen. When it doesn't, city employees can choose to take paid time off or unpaid time off, or can make it up within that week, both salaried employees or that pay period. Both salaried employees or non-salaried employees could choose to make that up, working with their direct supervisor to do so. And then the very last thing is, we just wanted to clarify kind of how it looks and outline some responsibilities. What are we doing if we do decide to delay and close a facility? Who's communicating with what? So we just put some, you know, some bullet points in there to make sure that current and future staff know the channels to go through to communicate it with the public. So you'll see a red line version, and then you'll see a clean version attached to that memo. And again, this is coming from the Personnel Committee as a recommendation to approve the amendments, as seen.
Thanks, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Okay, I'd be looking for a motion in a second to approve the amendment to the city council, City of Wapaka inclement weather policy.
I'd make that motion. Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Velicker, to approve the amendments to the City of Wapaka inclement weather policy. Any further discussion? Barb, please take a roll call vote.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagel?
Aye.
Nine eyes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item five is ordinance number 14-2023, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 Building Code. This is the first reading, and Jared's going to explain what we're doing here.
Thank you very much. This one starts on page 59 of your packets. This was the ordinance that was briefly explained in the public hearing. So what this is relating to is occupancy standards or minimum standards for occupancy. The standards are being put in place, again, as, not as part of the construction, but instead of part of the ongoing maintenance of a structure. We have had multiple instances that our building inspector has recognized, as well as our police department, of homes that may not be in the condition or shape that they should be in, especially for, per se, our Wisconsin winters, maybe not this year, but normal years, where maybe windows are broken, furnaces are not working, it's just not a habitable structure. So our building inspector actually took the initiative, looked through other municipal codes, and we kind of put this together as an initial draft, as we thought it worked best for Wapaka. But within here are minimum standards for the amenities that most would assume are necessities, a working kitchen sink, a working bathroom, a bathroom that has privacy, you know, not a broken door, just open rooms, you know, unbroken windows. You know, things, I guess, things of that nature, I won't go through the whole thing. There is a red line, of course, after this ordinance, starting on page 63. Most of this is all new, so there's a lot of red. But again, this is the first reading, so I encourage you to take a look. If you guys have any questions, of course, please let us know. Happy to sit down with any council member, or talk over the phone, or email. And of course, we can talk about it again at the second reading, otherwise, too.
As Jared said, this is the first reading, we will be voting on this after the second reading, I believe, on the 16th. Okay, thanks, Jared. Item five, I'm sorry, item six, is a conditional use permit, having to do with the Humane Society of Wapaka County Incorporated, 2293 Commercial Drive. Jared, you're up again.
Thank you very much. This one starts on page 68 of your packets. This has already gone to Plan Commission. Approval was recommended, and a public hearing was also had at Plan Commission. There were no for or against comments during that public hearing. This is for 2293 Commercial Drive. You may already know that location, as the Humane Society is already operating from it. What they're looking to do, which, good spot to look at for this, would be page 82, which it is a bigger picture, so you may have to zoom out a little bit. But they are looking to add an additional structure to the area. That works perfect. And that is going to be a clinic for spaying, neutering, and essential services that come along with the Humane Society.
So with this addition, they're coming back forward, because there's a substantial change to their parcel and the land use. But they are coming forward for essentially a renewal of that conditional use permit. We have not had any substantial complaints of this Humane Society over time, so there are really no conditions that accompany this conditional use permit. And staff also recommends approval, so this is the first and only reading for the conditional use, so I would be looking for approval tonight. If it is desired.
Thank you, Jared. Any questions for Jared? Okay, need a motion in a second to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Velicker, second by Olson, that council approves of the conditional use permit for the Humane Society of Wapaka County Incorporated, twenty-two ninety-three Commercial Drive. Any further discussion? Or any discussion? Okay, Barb, please call the roll.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item seven is a certified survey map for River North Development South Industrial Drive, three-lot SEM. Jared?
Thank you very much. This one starts on page ninety-five of your packets. To give you a little sense of direction for this map, to the north is a multi-tenant commercial unit where Wapaka Rentals is. To the south is Centerline Machine. So this chunk of land is in between those two on Industrial Drive. What this proposal is doing is splitting the lot technically into three, but there will be Lot One, which was actually going to encompass a development that was already approved at Plan Commission, and that is for a multifamily development from Mosaic Development out of Appleton. That development includes forty, I'm blanking now, forty-five units of cottage-style multifamily residences with attached garages. As part of that, there will need to be a regional stormwater basin, so that is what Lot Two is going to be for. And then Lot Three, which is the remainder of the lot, that is technically everything to the right on that page or to the east, that is going to be reserved for future single-family development. So essentially, this is just creating the lots so that that initial development can proceed in spring as planned. Happy to take any questions?
Yes. Any questions for Jared? Okay. I'd be looking for a motion in a second to approve the certified survey map for River North Development South Industrial Drive. Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Peterson, to approve the certified survey map, River North Development, Development South Industrial Drive. Any discussion?
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. Item eight is ordinance number zero one dash two zero two four, and ordinance repealing and recreating section twelve-point-two-six weights and measures program fees. This is the first reading. Barb?
Thank you. My memo can be found on page one oh one. And a little background, back in two thousand one, the city created an ordinance sixteen dash zero one and contracted with the Department of Agriculture. And then in two thousand twenty-six, we entered into a three-year renewing contract with the City of Appleton to perform our weights and measures program. In two thousand twenty-three, we contracted with the City of Appleton for twenty-two days with the rate of four forty-six per day. And in two thousand twenty-four, the rate increase, the rate will increase to four hundred and sixty per day, and they would also like to add a day, there was a couple new businesses that they need to inspect. So that total for the twenty-three days at four hundred and sixty a day will be ten thousand five hundred and eighty and dollars, an increase from seven hundred and sixty-eight last year. And I would like to increase the base licensing processing fee from forty dollars per business to fifty dollars to make that difference a little bit closer. The city can't make a profit on the program. We can allow for administration time for preparing the invoices, the cost to mail the invoices, answer any questions, and then purchase the stickers for the devices that they inspect. We hadn't had an increase since two thousand twelve. We went from twenty-nine dollars for the base fee to forty dollars, and all of the devices stayed the same since then as well. The device rates are based on the average amount of time that it takes to inspect, test, and certify the device. And so on the, in the ordinance, the table, that's why the prices are different. It takes longer to inspect pumps than it does to inspect the scales and things like that. So this is just the first reading, and I would just ask for the rate increase from forty dollars to fifty dollars.
All right, as Barb said, this is the first reading, we'll be voting on this at our meeting on the sixteenth. Thank you, Barb. Any questions for Barb? All right.
Hi, Barb. This is just for businesses that have weighing devices, correct?
Yes, yep, there's about fifty businesses in the city that get billed. It's for scales, like at the grocery stores, the scales for the produce and things like that. Gas pumps, yep, mhm.
I think it's really meant to kind of help the vendors as well as the consumers, right?
And also, it's for the checkouts, to make sure that the scanning is correct. And if they, they pick, I don't know, so many items to scan, and if they're incorrect, then they get a, I don't know, a report that they have to fix them, and then they come back and rescan them. And so having that is better for the consumer as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Barb? Okay, we'll move on to item nine, license report number sixteen fifty-five, operators licenses, bartenders licenses. I don't think the chief has any issues with any, okay. All right, be looking for a motion in a second to approve license report number sixteen fifty-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Velicker, to approve license report number sixteen fifty-five. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Next is license report number sixteen fifty-six, taxi cab drivers licenses. Think we have any issue with that either, so I'd be looking for a motion in a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Olson, second by Hagan, that council approve license report number sixteen fifty-six. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. No project discussion tonight, and next up is communications and recommendations of the mayor. Mayor, you have the floor.
Yeah, hey, thanks, Paul. Just, Jared, you want to just remind city planning commission members about our next meeting?
I certainly can. For city plan commission members and anyone who's interested in viewing city plan commission, our January third, two thousand twenty-four meeting has been canceled, but we will proceed or pick back up with our regularly scheduled February meeting, which will be the first Wednesday in February, which is February seventh at five fifteen.
All right. Thank you. I have nothing else, to tell you the truth. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking for a motion to adjourn? Move by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Olson, that we adjourn, gotta say something specific here, that we adjourn until our next regularly scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, January sixteenth, subject to call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We are adjourned at six forty PM. Thank you, everybody.